Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council's study session for the afternoon of June the 21st. I'll note that all of our council is present at this meeting. The first item on our agenda is to review the items on tonight's agenda. So, council, I know we had a lengthy meeting on Thursday reviewing this agenda, but has there any additional questions from any council members on tonight's agenda? Take your time. I know there's a lot on it, and we had some great presentations on Thursday, but as it stands now, I think we're keeping everything on the consent agenda. Okay. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, then, Item 2A, is to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction on proposed text amendments relating to Mesa's zoning ordinance pertaining to marijuana facilities. As we know, the voters changed the rules on us a little bit a while back, and so I think we need to catch up to where the voters are. Is that right? Welcome.
Mayor, council, if you recall, we had this discussion with the council a couple of months ago, but before that, we had been working with the other city departments to review our ordinances and also look at the proposition that was passed by voters back in November. So with that, we got a direction from the city council to go back to planning and zoning board to review and get a recommendation from them, which we have. So we are here to make a presentation to you as we plan to put this on the city council agenda on the 1st and the 8th. And with me here is Charlotte from the city attorney's office, and Rachel, which I think you guys are familiar with both of them. So with that, I'll pass it on to Rachel.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. So as Nana and the mayor were just introducing, this is in response to Proposition 207 that was passed this last November. So that legalized the use of recreational marijuana in Arizona. As of late January, the Department of Health Services has started issuing approvals for operations of those facilities. And in response, or in trying to attempt to address that, the first step as a city was we adopted some amendments to the police ordinance back in December 2020. And with, amongst other things, one of the things that that did was limit recreational marijuana to dual licensee facilities. So we're back here at this time to talk about the zoning ordinance and further amendments to any sort of development standards here. So currently, we regulate medical marijuana in the zoning ordinance, and the development standards here permitted these in light industrial and general industrial zoning districts. They have permissible hours of operation from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and there are certain size limitations for the different facilities. And so what those are, for medical marijuana dispensaries, those are limited to 2,500 square feet. When we talk about the cultivation facilities, those go up to 25,000 square feet. And for marijuana infusion facilities, that's 10,000 square feet. As well as those regulations, there are also spacing requirements for medical marijuana dispensaries, as well as cultivation and infusion. So on the screen before you are the specific spacing requirements for dispensaries themselves. So the specifics of that is that it's a mile between each medical marijuana dispensary, 2,400 feet from correctional transitional housing facilities, residential substance abuse facilities, any alcohol rehabilitation facilities, and then your off-site cultivation. Getting down further, we get 1,200 feet from churches, schools, libraries, public parks, but those are specific to public parks in the L.I. and G.I. districts. And then 500 feet from daycare centers, preschools, and all other public parks and other zoning districts, as well as privately owned open space.
Mr. Freeman has a question.
Hi, question. When you say 5,280 feet medical marijuana dispensary, do you pin-drop that, and then they go a mile radius from there?
Yes. So it is a buffer, in a sense, from that property.
Does that include any county areas? Is there a distance? If there is a county area wanting to put a medical dispensary in their area, does that, is there a conflict there?
We can't tell. We can't ask if we can regulate this.
In the county, or whether or not they have something, and that creates the buffer.
So currently, there's a medical dispensary on McKellips Road, and for an example, there's one being put in at Alma School in McClellan, and that's in the county. So I don't know whether that distance there, whether we would regulate that or not, or be involved.
So when we evaluate our spacing requirements, we do take into account the adjacent jurisdiction. So if there was one in a county island, or, say, in Gilbert, within the mile, or the, you know, 2,400 feet for a different use, that would be counted as part of the spacing regulations.
So they're prior to the application to us, then they get counted?
That exists prior.
So I'm assuming they're outside this distance requirement, the two medical dispensaries. There's one forthcoming, that's why I'm asking the question. That's in the county currently.
Right. But we wouldn't be able to regulate those in the county?
Right. Okay. All right. Got it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
We have a lot of the residential, the substance abuse facilities that pop up in our neighborhoods throughout Mesa, and not all of them get licensing or check in with the city to allow us to know they're there. So how do we utilize or use the 2,400-foot rule if we don't know they're there?
So this, I think, starts kind of passing into some of what we're going to be discussing next with the community residences, but if they are facilities that have over five residents living in with them, they should be registering with the city either as a group home for the handicapped, or as a social service facility if it's a larger treatment center. So you're correct, if it's below that threshold that we require registration for, they would not be accounted in this measurement.
Okay. You're going to talk about that in the next presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving forward, cultivation and infusion facilities, these have their own specific spacing requirements. So they are permitted 2,400 square, 2,400 square feet, or feet from a medical marijuana dispensary. And the asterisk here, the caveat of this is if we have a cultivation or infusion facility that services a specific dispensary, those separation requirements are not in place. So they do not have to be separated if they're servicing that specific dispensary. And then 1,200 feet, once again, from church, library, schools, public parks, and then 500 feet from the daycare centers, preschools, and other public parks besides L.I. and G.I. zoning districts. So what we are proposing with these amendments is to modify the definitions. We're modifying Section 3134, which was medical marijuana facilities, to be more general and include the dual licensee facilities. We're also adding separation requirements for community residences in with those, and also social service facility separation requirements. The hours of operation, we're proposing to remain the same, the permitted zoning to remain the same, and the size limitations of those facilities to remain the same. With the definitions, this is just a quick summary of what's being done here. So there are some definitions that are being removed, quite a few that are being added, and then several that are being modified as well, just to be more general to marijuana uses themselves, instead of being specific to medical marijuana. We took this, these amendments to the Planning and Zoning Board on May 12th. They have recommended approval of adoption, 7-0. There were a couple of concerns that were brought up by board members that had to do with the size of the facilities, and their comments were in regards to this being a legal and allowed business, just like any other business, and so they didn't see the need for a size limitation on the facilities. They understood that we, as a city, need to evaluate these recent changes more and see how they affect our community, but they recommended that we pursue those sooner than And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm sorry, can you say that, make that last point again? P&amp;Z recommended that we reevaluate the size limits of the facilities?
There are some, yes, there are a couple board members that would like us to remove the size limitation on facilities.
To remove the size limitation?
Right. Or more to increase them. We told them that we needed to evaluate these recent changes to, you know, to the laws to better evaluate how those are going to affect the community, and they understood that. And they just encouraged us to explore that, and sooner than later, to look into it soon.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Thank you, mayor. Are you also going to look at the hours of operation as a possibility in terms of changing that? Or you're going to just, I mean, as I see this, it's a voter-approved initiative. Voters obviously approve this, and you're looking at evaluating in terms of how we limit the size of facility. Are you considering the terms of operation when they're open?
Mayor, council member Luna, so we will be, at least, our recommendation for now, because this is a new use, well, in a way that has been introduced into the state, we want to continue to evaluate and hear what the neighborhood complaints are, what issues that we face in the coming weeks, as basically this use is authorized. And then based on that, we absolutely will come to council with a recommendation after evaluation of the activities in a while.
But, mayor, council, I think, again, when we came to council, I think there was a concern about how long they would be open. And right now, the proposal is 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
I guess that's.
So the question is, we felt like that was pretty generous for most businesses, or not even, I mean, that's pretty, that's a long period. And then, I guess, the question from P&amp;Z, some board members, so it's not, they didn't take action on it, it wasn't a vote, it was comments, about limiting the size, I think that's on Slide 4, of the different facilities, correct?
Yes.
And so what, you know, what was approved was, were these sizes for these facilities, we're not recommending changing those, we're bringing it to council. Obviously, council gives us guidance to evaluate whether that's limited, too limiting or not, we can come back at some point. But right now, I think our experience is that most, now, correct me if I'm wrong, that we're seeing is a lot of the medical dispensaries are also now the recreational facilities.
Dual licensing. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Luna?
And Anna, you and I spoke about this. I think the issue had to do with the queues, the people outside waiting. I know where we're under COVID, and there were long lines, especially if you look at areas in and around the community, and expanding the size of facility may solve that issue. Of course, we've been only on, dealing with this at abbreviated time, we don't have a lot of experience with that. So I think that was really the issue. Is that correct?
Mayor, council member Luna, that's correct. Actually, when we had this discussion, we were reminded, because one of the concerns from the Planning and Zoning Board was the long queues outside these facilities, and that's when, actually, through our discussion, we were reminded after the meeting that most of those queues were, as a result of COVID, where there were restrictions as to the number of people that can go into the facilities, and the line, the queues, you have to be six feet apart from each other. So that's, that was what was creating some of the long queues. So as this recommendation, based on your decision, goes forward, we will continue to monitor and see what's going on, and then come back to council at the right time.
Thank you. Ms. Duff?
Yes, I did listen in to the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting that mentioned this, and I think, just from my interpretation and my memory, is that they were concerned on the size of the dispensaries, because previously, they were just medical marijuana dispensaries, and now they're recreational. So they're doubling, really, their customer base, or their customer offering. Previous, even previous to COVID, many of these facilities had long lines, they would hand out pizza and water and do, you know, their tents and everything like that, because their selling area was so limited in size that they only could allow, and there might, maybe there's some regulation on, I don't know, so many people in the area at a time. So we had the long-cued lines around the building, which, regardless of heat, isn't really a great, safe way to have people waiting in line outside in parking lots, and with tents, and, you know, trying to address that. So it's become an issue, you know, how to resolve these lines, especially as they've increased, doubled their offerings, medical and recreational.
Thank you. Other council questions or comments?
Just an interesting tracking of sales.
Is recreational is not increasing as much as more, we're seeing more of the doubling of medical?
Really?
And I think there has something to do with, correct me if I'm wrong, the tax, the taxes on recreational versus medical.
Interesting.
That not anything to do with the lines, I'm just saying it's.
So we were getting all that.
So you've been in line?
Several times. I don't want the medical stuff, I'm not going to pay that excise tax.
So there's a different tax rate?
PTSD is what it was, actually.
If I go in and buy marijuana, and I have a prescription, I pay a tax rate that is lower than if I just walk in and say I'm here for recreational.
Yeah. There's a, I can't remember what they called it, but part of the negotiations for recreational, if you recall, is to create a, like a 16% for a variety of different purposes, I think public safety was one of them.
Hmm. Okay. Guess we could have seen that coming. Mr. Reddick?
Question on the, just a clarification, I mean, on the cultivation facility, did you say a dispensary can create a cultivation facility within their property that they own right now, and not be, not, it wouldn't meet the requirements, but they could still set up something like that with this change?
Correct. Mayor, council member Reddick, so a facility can have both a dispensary, cultivation, and infusion facilities within the same property, and they are not subject to the separation requirements.
Okay. So all three, they can have within a building, or separate buildings?
That is correct, and they would be, the size of each one of those would be specific to these regulations, so they would just have to meet those individual size limitations.
Okay. And the question on, does this mirror other municipalities' changes to what's happening with the passage of this proposition? These changes that we're making here, Mesa, do they mirror other cities, or are we more stringent, or less stringent, or just about the same?
Mayor, council, and from my memory, I know we looked at other jurisdictions around, and looked at what they were doing, and I remember, we were not really out of place, we were really within the middle. Actually, my understanding, Charlotte, is a couple of the cities here, actually, once they pass a proposition, actually, are not even moving forward to allow recreational marijuana.
Mayor, council members, with regards to the recreational marijuana, I know some cities are looking at increasing the size of the facilities to allow for the dual licensee facilities, and some cities are not allowing just recreational standalone marijuana dispensaries, they're only allowing the dual licensee facilities. So we are in line in that regards, but when it comes to the size of some of the facilities that are allowing the dual licensee facilities, they are looking at increasing the size.
But remember, council, too, because they're only allowed in light industrial and general industrial, I think we provided you a.
A table.
A map.
There is one up there.
So there's not a lot of, you probably, if you have a site, you're probably not going to move today. There's not a, you know what I'm saying, or you could upgrade, I guess, within that little area, but it's not like you're going to, you can't take your license and go very far. So you're kind of, if you have a location today in Mesa, you can see there's not a lot of other locations you could move into without encroaching on somebody else's distance. Does that make sense? The buffer, I guess. So that maybe, part of this is maybe our limitation, but just what's available in those light industrial and general industrial sites.
I guess I'm still stuck on the different tax rates, you know, for medicinal marijuana versus recreational marijuana. It seems like there may, that when this was sold to the voters, it was sold as a source of revenue for, you know, a variety of good causes, and if people have kind of done a bait and switch, saying, I'll just, you know, there's probably a lot of doctors who write those prescriptions that are very busy right now, it sounds like.
Well, we'll see, mayor. I think we're supposed to get our first check at the end of the month?
Yes.
So we'll have a better sense of what that, because that 16% is dispersed quarterly, or?
Twice a year.
Twice a year. So we'll get a sense of what that looks like by the end of the month. So, but from what we can see from kind of the way things come in on a monthly basis, it's definitely stronger on the medical side.
Well, I'd be open to talking about that. I mean, does that, is the city of Mesa, could we increase our tax rate on medical marijuana? Or should we encourage some discussions at the league to encourage the legislature to equalize the tax rates, just to kind of avoid this, this whole, you know, this apparent oversight where people can buy recreational marijuana and avoid paying the tax that the voters thought they were going to be paying?
Although, excuse me for interrupting, but medical marijuana, I would assume, would be a more expensive product, since it's a higher level of, what's it, T-H, whatever. So I think it's a more expensive product, and even though it has a lesser sales tax rate, so I don't know if you're really saving money.
I guess, this is very problematic, because I'm not, there are a lot of people who very legitimately need and should be prescribed marijuana. I don't dispute that, and I don't, it's not my intent to make life more difficult or more expensive for them, but it does seem like there's a, an unintended consequences here that we might.
Well, we'll see, mayor. We're just talking early trends, but right now, that's what we're seeing. There is a difference in the tax burden.
Interesting. So is this going to come back to us, then, at a future date with these changes in the form of an ordinance?
Council, mayor, this is scheduled to come before you on July 1st for introduction, and then for action on July 8th.
Okay. Great. Council, any other questions on this agenda item? All right. Thank you very much. We might have the same cast of presenters for the next agenda item. This is to hear a presentation and discuss zoning ordinance changes pertaining to group homes, which will be renamed to community residences and transitional housing facilities. Please.
Mayor, council, again, this is very similar to the marijuana. Actually, this discussion has been ongoing for a while, longer than the marijuana discussion, and we've done a couple of, several community meetings, we've also met with the association, and we've gone to plan a zoning board. We also came to you a couple of months ago to discuss our recommendation earlier with you. So with that, we are here after P&amp;Z to make a presentation on it.
So as a background, as Nana was introducing, we last came to in March to discuss these changes, and community residences are more commonly known, or known right now, as group home for the handicapped. So at that time, we discussed with you our proposed amendments. We went and talked to Planning and Zoning Board as well in March, and we're directed to proceed with those as proposed. So as a recap for the purpose and goals of this, there really is kind of a two-tiered, one being the more regulatory, trying to strengthen the city's registration process, and to make sure that our requirements are in compliance with state and federal laws. But we also want to be looking at this through the lens of, are we providing our residents with disabilities equal opportunity to live in a family-like setting and integrate into the community? We also want to look at it through that lens of preventing overconcentration of these facilities. We don't want to have a result of a social, de facto, social service district, so looking at those spacing requirements as well. So for what our current regulations are here, they really can be broken down into kind of three tiers. The first is if you have five or less residents, they are not required to register as a group home for the handicapped, they are treated just like any other family. In that case, there's no separation requirements between those facilities. When we start requiring these homes to come in and register with us, is if they are housing six to 10 residents, at that point, the separation requirements come into play, which is 1,200 feet from another group home for the handicapped, 1,200 feet from assisted living as well. They're permitted in certain zoning districts, most of those are residential districts in nature, as you can see, the RSL, RS, RM, DR, downtown residential districts. And then when we get into the higher occupancy of more than 10 residents, once again, they still have to register with the city, they're still required to have the same separation from other group homes or assisted living facilities, but in this case, they are also required to obtain approval of a special use permit. And the zoning districts for these homes, which have the larger occupancy, are also a little different, as you can see, that these are more commercial in nature, or more geared towards multiple residents. So they're allowed in the RM and in some of the commercial zoning districts. So what we are recommending for amendments to this zoning ordinance is amending definitions, so removing several definitions that are either outdated, or they were just kind of duplicative of each other, replacing those with new terminologies, as we were discussing, such as replacing the group home for the handicapped for, with community residences. And I'll get into the difference between what a family and a transitional community residence is later. Adding certain definitions, one of the most important ones being the definition of family, and then modifying other ones, such as boarding house and social service facilities. So the definition of a family, just very briefly, this is something that we did not have before, that we are proposing to introduce. So it would be two or more individuals related by blood, marriage, or adoption, or a group of no more than four unrelated individuals. So what this does is it changes that threshold for the registration, where it used to be, you know, six or more unrelated individuals living in a group home for the handicap would have to register. This would actually reduce it, so then now, five to 10 unrelated individuals have to register with the city. When we get into the definition of community residences, as I was describing, that's five to 10 unrelated individuals with disabilities. There are two kind of distinguishing categories here, one being the family community residence, and one, the other one being the transitional community residence. The family community residence is for longer-term care, so it's a year or more, while the transitional community residence is more of a limited tenancy, so less than a year. And what this does with the zoning and the land use regulations is they get treated a little bit differently in the code. So the family community residences get treated similar to single residence uses, and because of the more transitionary or limited, you know, tendency of those transitional community residences, they get treated like multiple residence uses. So with that, there are some distinguishing features within the land use of where those are allowed, and this is just an example of one of the differences here. So as you can see, for the family community residences, they're allowed within agricultural, single residence, RSL, and the multiple residence zoning districts. But because they are more of that transitionary, transitionary nature, they would require a special use permit to just give a little bit of additional oversight as to the impacts to the surrounding neighborhood, and the single residential, and the residential small lot zoning districts. Within the multiple resident zoning district, where you would normally see kind of that, you know, in and out of, you know, tenants moving into a building, that would still be permitted by right. And when we get into development standards, the spacing is still going to be remaining, the 1,200 feet from another community residence and assisted living facility, but we are adding in that this also includes correctional transitional housing facilities. The occupancy, they're required, as I was describing before, to register if they have five or more residents now, that used to be six or more. And also, we're really working on strengthening the registration requirements, so they'd be required to provide a license or a certification, a license from the state, or an equivalent sort of certification from a recognized organization, showing that they're providing a high level of care, just as would be expected from the state. We're also requiring that they give us an annual renewal, and that's part of our efforts to keep track of these homes and make sure that our database is up to date. And we also are establishing a revocation process as well, if we encounter any sort of issues with the home. And then the final piece of this is the reasonable accommodation piece. So this is required by federal law, it allows considerations and modifications to different development standards to allow persons with disabilities equal access to housing. So there are a couple different scenarios that they can seek reasonable accommodation to, and that would be our spacing requirements, the occupancy requirements, and the licensing requirements. Each one of these would require approval of a special use permit. requirements. Each one of these would require approval of a special use permit. And with these, we have recommended set of approval criteria for each one of these accommodations. So as Nana was describing, we did meet with the Arizona Recovering Housing Association, ASRA. They provided a copy of this ordinance and we met with them to discuss any questions they had. And they were mostly questions and no concerns that we are following up on currently. And that is the end of that piece. And I'm going to move into the third ordinance that kind of rolls in with this one as well that has to do with correctional transitional housing facilities and administrative use permits.
Maybe before you do that, Council, any questions on the presentation at this point? I have a quick question. So if we have five individuals living together that are not related to one another, maybe they're just roommates. There's no court order, there's no substance abuse issues. It's just five people that are coming together to occupy a large home.
Like college students.
Like college, yeah, like, yeah, college students, for example. Are they, are they subject to this requirement and they would have to register with the city?
Mayor, council members, no, they would not be subject to the registration requirements. The registration and the licensing, the spacing requirements, that is for community residents or residents that serve people that are disabled. So if a residence has five members, actually, with the changes that we're proposing, and we're going to reduce the number of unrelateds that can live together to four, the number that could live together in a residential home would be four. So you wouldn't, five wouldn't be allowed to reside in a residential home, unlike a community residence where we're limiting the definition of family to four unrelated individuals. With community residents, they're allowed to ask for that reasonable accommodation to allow more people to reside in the home. But that exception does not apply to other group residential housing.
Okay. So if there's no, nothing therapeutic going on or nothing court-ordered going on, then five unrelated individuals can live in the same residence without registering with the city?
They actually wouldn't be considered a family, so they wouldn't be allowed in single residential and...
They would not be.
Be considered group housing. And so they would only be allowed where group housing is allowed in the zoning ordinance.
So they are subject to this ordinance, correct? Yes, okay. Yes. All right. Vice Mayor.
Would that also apply to, some people do the Airbnbs and they rent out rooms to different individuals? So if not, would also apply then, right?
That's correct. When this ordinance is, if it's adopted and we reduce the number of unrelated that can live together under the definition of family, that would also apply to short-term rentals or vacation rentals.
Thank you.
So the solution in that scenario would just be to come and register with the city? And they wouldn't necessarily have to register as being in the, the group home therapeutic industry. They just need to say, we are, this is a large home with a lot of bedrooms and it can reasonably accommodate more than four unrelated individuals?
Mayor, Council, I think the distinction here from community residence to any other type of residence is, community residence, the people living in those homes, they have to be disabled. So they have to fall under the federal definition of what disability is. That's, that's different from any kind of occupancy where you have four college, I mean, five college students or five friends living together. There's a distinction between those two. So community residence that we're talking about right now is people with disability. That's very specific to that.
And if you have a community residence, that's when you have the spacing and the registration and licensing requirements. The other, the four, the five college students or four college students living together, that would be group housing. And so they are only allowed in certain zoning districts.
Okay.
But they don't have to register with the city or comply with any spacing requirements.
I'm with you. So it's a zoning question at that point. We don't have multiple residents housing in every zoning, you'd have to have appropriate zoning for that.
That's correct.
Right.
That's multifamily, but effectively that's what it becomes, right? It becomes an apartment. So that's why the number is where it's at. And so they mirrors more like, like-for-like uses that are around it.
Okay. That makes sense to me.
But Mayor, if I may also add, that's why there's a certain tension on this number, right? And you'll see this number being slightly different, different municipalities between four and five. And so as the number gets lower, there's this tension as far as renting out, you know, college students or whatever, because you apply it uniformly, right? And so, and so that's why you see many cities are at either four or five within Arizona. We're aware of one city that's at three, but to our knowledge, they actually don't enforce it because of actually probably this tension that when you get that number that low, you know, how does that really apply with college students and sort of uniformly applying it throughout? And so that's why we worked with a consultant, really four or five is sort of the common number. And four, the number we're recommending to go to is the same number that Prescott has and I think another city recently has gone to. And so we think it's appropriate, but not too low.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, my question comes more from an oversight perspective for the bad actors out there. And there are bad actors out there. We all, I think we all have them in each of our communities where neighbors are constantly calling PD or complaining to us on council that something's going on, some type of activity. What is the oversight? Because we're not issuing a license, so we can't really revoke a license. But how do we, what oversight and what regulatory, what, what can we do when we have those bad actors? What are we allowed to do from a municipal standpoint?
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson. So that is why we are introducing the revocation process in here. With the licensing, it is kind of a two-step process with the state. So they, yes, are licensed by the state, but they have to be in compliance with our zoning. So if we do not allow for it, they would not be issued their state license. So it's kind of that, that push and pull there. But what you're describing is exactly why we're trying to address that through revocation. If we have any sort of issues that the zoning administrator may be able to revoke their, their registration and they would have to cease operation within 45 days.
But the enforcement side of that is code compliance.
Okay. So it's code that...
Yes. Yeah. They're the ones that go, they're the ones that, if we get the complaint and if it's determined that there's not there, Nana doesn't go out and knock on the door.
Well, because usually it's me calling PD saying, hey, how many times have you guys been out there? They look it up and...
Like most of our building code, zoning code enforcements, you know, those standards fall under something that the code enforcement also...
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, one of the things that we also discovered as we had this discussion is even requiring the annual registration in itself basically helped to weed out those bad operators because they'll be required to come in and register annually, keep their documents on file. And so that's my understanding is cities that have instituted this kind of registration has really helped streamline and basically eliminate those bad operators as well.
Is this an annual registration they have to do or...
That's, Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, that's correct. After this is passed, they will have six months to really come in and register. And then every year, they will come in and register to keep their documents and everything on file up to date as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Today that we have a record of everyone that's out there.
That's correct.
Mr. Reddy?
Who holds the registration is mostly the state or is it a combination of the state and us? Or is there circumstances where they have, they have registration with us only?
Mayor, Councilmember Reddy, so there are two types, as Rachel was saying. We don't issue registration for the operation in itself. We are looking at the land use requirements and basically all the other things like a building requirements, building city and all that. But as to the licensing, it's the state that issues the licenses. So our annual registration is making sure that you meet the zoning requirements every year and then your who to contact and all those information. And we also will make sure that they also hold current registration from the state as well. So at the end of the year, if you come and you don't have that registration or if the state has revoked your registration, then that's the opportunity for us to basically look into what we're going to do with your license.
So you have to go to register to the state? That's the first process and then the registration here at the city as well?
Some may be registered, but their registration from the state has to be current.
But they have to confirm zoning before they can get the license?
That's correct.
And the current ones that are operating right now, is, are we grandfathering them in or they have to, what's the process for the current facilities that we have in the city?
Mayor, Councilmember Reddy, so it's a British, right? One of the things we've done, just to kind of answer that question a little bit, we did send out notification to all those operators months ago to really track and have record of those that are already operating. Because to establish the nonconformity, we needed to get those information and build a database. So those that already have license issued and then permits from the city, those are basically, some are conforming, some already meet the separation distance. But those that were licensed or obtained their permit before we change our separation distance, those are what we call nonconforming. They are so, basically, they have that nonconforming right to continue to use. But as part of this amendment, if they don't, we're going to send notification after you approve. Again, six months, they need to come back and re-register again within that six months. If they don't, they will lose that nonconformity status as well.
And then you mentioned as far as building, is there requirement, once they, they're offering these services for disabled individuals to, if they're not under the compliance of providing accessible for disability references as far as their buildings, their house, or do they have to conform then to those items that you mentioned?
I think I'll pass that on to John.
So, Mayor, Council?
The answer is yes. There are regulations in the building code. Those are not changing. So it's, it's been probably 20 years since it has really changed significantly. So those, those rules and regulations have been around. And my understanding is the state licensing also requires the same. We're now synced, going to be synced with the codes. We adopted the 18 codes, the 2018 International Fire Code and Building Code. In 2019, the state is about to do the same. So that will line up and be nice and synced now.
Thank you, Ms. Spilsbury, and then Ms. Duff.
What number were we at before? Or were we at a number? You don't want me to ask that?
No, no, you can ask it. So we didn't actually have a technical definition of family, but effectively we defined it as five. That's sort of the short answer. And now it's going to four. And that's unrelated people. And obviously, all related people are also included.
Okay. So I'm assuming there's probably several homes that are operating with maybe five, and now it will be four. So how are we getting the word out? If we didn't know about them, how can we possibly let them know? And who keeps track of that registration with the city?
Nana mentioned that briefly, just a second ago, but I'll let him expand upon it. So they've started, they've started, they've started, they started that process, but that is an additional process. And we're also going to give them six months to also...
I heard that part. Okay. I just thought that was people we already knew about. So I'm, I'm talking about ones that we wouldn't know about.
Well, then they're...
We wouldn't, I mean, we just wouldn't.
I see what you're saying.
Like, how do you get the word out to like anyone that might fall into this category?
Because we only sent the notice out that those were licensed.
Right. So that's my question. So I didn't miss it.
Mayor, Councilmember, Councilmember. So if you did not receive any license from the city, if you did not receive, shall we, hopefully it's okay to use the word legal, if you don't have a legal permit from the city, you are not qualified to be classified as nonconforming because you basically never obtained anything. That was legal at the time of when you obtained the permit. So that's one of the things that we look into.
The purpose of that letter was to establish who existed prior to these changes to establish their nonconforming rights, correct?
That's correct.
So I think Councilmember Spilbury is asking for the, the, the home right now that is a family by definition. So they wouldn't have had to get a permit. And so how do we reach out? And so how, how are we going to do sort of some PR to them?
For those.
We might have to come back to you.
Okay.
That is a very fine question. So yes.
There also is that requirement that they do have to come in and register with the city and show proof of licensing. So your question is how do we get the word out to those facilities or homes that have five?
That now would, that didn't have to before.
Right. And that, we'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
You've been working with the industry, so that might be one way to do it, too.
Okay. And then the, what is the definition of disability? Like, are we calling disabilities like, are the elderly and the substance abuse people both fall into those categories of disabilities?
So the definition that we're using in the proposed amendments is the definition under the Federal Fair Housing Act Amendment. It's if you have a mental or physical impairment that affects a major life activity. So that's, and it goes on from that. But we're using that definition from the Federal Fair Housing Act.
Okay. And then I think this might have gotten brought up when we talked about this last time, but I think we were going to look at some clarification. I don't remember getting an answer. As far as like live-in help and employees and caretakers, they don't count for that number then, correct?
Councilmember Spilsbury, that's correct. They do not count towards the occupancy.
Okay. Perfect. All right. That's all.
Vice Mayor?
I have a question. Do we ever revoke a special use permit or a council use permit which is issued if we find that they're not operating in conformance?
Mayor, Councilmember, Vice Mayor, yes. Well, I'm not sure. I don't have a history of whether we've done that before. But the code is very clear that there is a revocation process, that if they are in violation of their permit, that we take them through the revocation process.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So when is this coming back? It sounds like, I mean, is it scheduled for the 1st of July?
That's correct.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Fran.
I did make some notes and a lot of them were answered. So Nana and I have discussed about this. So if I, if I had a community residence and I wanted to sell it to another individual and I was registered, would that registration continue to the next person I sold it to?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, the use will transfer by the registration. The person will have to come back and update the registration because it will have different owner of license and all that. But I think your question is more about a group, the community resident use that runs for the land. So until they lose, basically, if they stop with operation for a year, based on our code requirements for when a nonconforming use ceases, then they lose that use. But it will transfer to another owner or whoever buys it.
So if they didn't use that for a year, then they would lose that benefit, basically?
That's, yes, that's the, and this actually applies to any kind of nonconforming use in the cities. Example, if you have a restaurant, that is not allowed in a specific zoning district. But at the time that you receive the permit, that use is allowed. That's where you establish your nonconformity. If you stop operation for a year, you lose that nonconformity. So it's very similar to other uses. But also, another level that is being added to it tonight is based on the ordinance, we are going to be sending the information, the letters to all these owners. And they have six months to come back and basically tell us that they are in operation. They have all the documentation. If they don't, they lose any kind of whether it's conforming or nonconforming. They lose that as well.
Okay. My other question, too, is, I'm going to use my district as an example. I have three community residents, we'll use that word today, operating within the 1,200-foot level or the 1,200-foot spacing area. And there's a fourth one, probably within the 12, it's more of a commercial type. And I think we've talked about this. And they're less than four or four or less. And how, how does a neighborhood then, I mean, they're not having to get in compliance with the registration, from what I understand, from what we're doing today? And going back to Councilmember Thompson's, you know, question, how do we protect the character of our neighborhoods when they can kind of transform it? And I think one of my questions, I said to you, what would stop me as a business owner buying every one of those houses on the street and putting four or less individuals on that street and then we change the whole character of that neighborhood? And I know that probably will never happen. will never happen, but it is a concern. I mean, I have three within 1,200 feet of each other.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, couple of things. So once, if you are four or less, that is really considered as a family, just a single family unit living together. And that's from even the studies and all the information we got from the consultant. That's really what most jurisdictions have done. But that's one. And secondly, our understanding from our communication and discussions with the industry, it becomes very difficult to make it even financially feasible to have four or less. So the, most of them usually comes with a six to 10, which makes economically feasible, or they can even break even with that. So that's one of the things they express to us, that as we lower the number to four, it makes it difficult to actually have those uses.
Okay. And then this special use permit, that's going to be administered by the Board of Adjustment?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks, that's all I have.
Mayor, Council, if I could add, just as a follow-up, because, and it goes back to, I think, what prior question was, do you count somebody that's sort of living in and providing some of the services? And right now, the ordinance doesn't, we didn't include that. And the idea was, and we've talked about it, we went back and forth, is because you don't want to disincentivize the operator that has four that might have somebody to live in, so that you have some level of supervision there, as opposed to if you do count it, then they're less likely. Now you've incentivized them not to have someone to live in to try to be four or less, right? Because once they're five, they're going to be subject to all the, everything you've seen on all these power, on these PowerPoints, right? And so that was sort of the idea also, was to not create a disincentive for sort of the four or less to have, you know, live in or additional supervision, too. And so that was sort of, you know, dovetailing and trying to get, sort of, looking at sort of the quality for those that are really, that are a family and fall outside her ability to regulate.
Okay. Thank you, Council. Any other questions on this item? All right.
I have a question.
Oh, I apologize. Did you complete your presentation?
I got one quick second part to this about correctional transitional-
That's right, I interrupted you when you were, I apologize. Please proceed.
It will be quick. So this is related, but it's outside of this section, so it's a separate ordinance here. But we're talking about correctional transitional housing facilities and administrative use permit amendments. So correctional transitional housing facilities are facilities that house people that are serving out the remainder of their sentence, and they're providing maybe some job support or additional, you know, living training about how to cope in society today. So with these amendments, as I alluded to earlier, we're adding a separation requirement from the community residences. So that had to be added into this section of the code as well. So 1,200 feet from community residences and assisted living facilities. And with this, we're also adding a registration and renewal process, similar to the community residents. Right now, they're required to obtain a council use permit, but this will just help us keep up on our database and establishing those separation requirements for all these various uses. And then the second part of this has to do with administrative use permits, and that is establishing-
Excuse me, Rachel, maybe before you go on, I think the Vice Mayor has a question for you.
I'm sorry, I know we're trying to get through this, but just for my clarification. So adding a registration renewal requirements, that is the five plus or at any?
At any, at any number for this use.
Okay, we'll require a council use permit for the transitional housing facilities.
Correctional, it doesn't matter if it's one or more.
That's correct.
Okay, great. I just want to clarify. Thank you.
Is that a council use permit? Is that a council use permit? Is this conditional? Same thing?
Mayor, Councilmember, that's correct. It's a council use permit, so conditional use.
Oh, yes, Mayor, or Mayor, Councilmember, you're looking at the second part of this. This is, I was going to get into this additionally, but the correctional transitional housing facilities require a council use permit.
And Mayor and Councilmembers, I also would like to add that we are also removing the exception to the location or the distance criteria. The spacing requirements that we have in that exception to those requirements, that doesn't apply to prison parolees. You see that in community residents, we have to have that exception because those serve people that have a disability. But we don't have to have that same exemption here for community, for correctional transitional housing facilities, because they're not protected by the Fair Housing Act. So we are recommending removing that exception to the distance requirement.
And previously, we didn't require a council use permit for a transitional housing facility or correctional?
Vice Mayor, we did require a council use permit, but we did not require registration or renewal of the facilities.
Okay. All right, that's good to know, thanks.
Okay, so for the other change that's recommended with this ordinance, it's the establishment of approval criteria for administrative use permits. So this approval criteria would be very similar to what you would see for other conditional use permits. Conditional use permits is the overarching name used for council use permits, special use permits, administrative use permits. But those all look to, to really try to prevent any, any sort of detriment to the surrounding community. So we look at compatibility in there. We look at making sure that they're in line with the general plan and other adopted plans and policies. So establishing that kind of criteria for the administrative side of it as well. Okay, and once again, with, with these, we went to Planning and Zoning Board on May 12th, and they had recommended approval of adoption, seven zero. And I'd be happy to answer any questions now.
Thank you. Ms. Pillsbury.
Okay, I'm, just for clarification, the, on the previous slide, when you say assisted living facilities, so that phrase didn't come up at the first presentation. So is that assisted living facilities are totally different than community residences? Or are those called community residents? I'm just a little confused.
Councilmember Pillsbury, they, they are a little different. They have a different definition, but they get treated similar to community residences as far as registration and separation requirements.
Okay, so the previous presentation was not in reference to assisted living, per se, just to community residents?
No, it was not. And back in December this last year, we, we came forward to counsel with some amendments to our assisted living facility ordinance.
I wasn't here for that, so there you go.
So, Rachel, you couldn't put assisted living facility in a residential neighborhood, or could you? Under the definition of assisted living?
You could if it was less than 10 individuals.
So there are some home, smaller things that are considered assisted living facilities? It doesn't have to be like a commercial building?
That's correct. So under our current definition, assisted living facilities is that overarching term. And then there are two definitions, one's assisted living home, which is the five to 10 residents, and then an assisted living facility, which is the larger, more than 10 residents, what you would see in more of a commercial setting.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I just want to say thank you. This has been long overdue, an overhaul of this, and I appreciate all the staff for working on it, because I know it's been difficult listening to all of us and our input. And for me especially, I just appreciate having some teeth for the neighborhoods to weigh in on a CUP or even an SUP for the, for the Board of Adjustment, because how it impacts our neighborhoods, and we don't want changes there. But we do know that there's rights for individuals to live in these type of standards and whether they're community residences or assisted living. So again, I appreciate all the work. I know there was a lot of it. So hopefully, if we have to tweak it in the future, we can.
Mr. Thompson?
I know we had this conversation a few years ago, and it, it sort of segues in with this. And it's the medical response that we have for fire units going out to not only the residential houses, but to the assisted living facilities. I know at one point in time, we talked about adding fees on to our units that are dispatched, because we have frequent flyer facilities where we're sending, you know, a seven-man crew to go out just to pick somebody up off the floor and put them back in their bed. And it's, and it's tying up a lot of our, use of our, of our equipment and our personnel for doing this. And did we ever implement anything like that? Or should we start having that conversation again?
Well, we looked at it, Mayor and Council, and I think after several attempts to figure out how it worked, it just became impractical. I think we went to public safety, and it just was impractical possibility of trying to figure out what that number was, and how do you limit public safety services to groups. You bring up a very good point, whether it's police or fire, but I think we determined that was just not, it wasn't something we had the ability to restrict and not respond, because we don't know when that time comes or, and if someone fails to pay the penalty, but then they have a real emergency, how do you, how do you answer that call? So those are the challenges, I think. There may have been others, but those are the ones I remember in the conversation.
To me, it'd be like calling a false 911 call, right? You're going to get a fine if, if we show up and there's not an emergency and you called 911 for an emergency.
Yeah. That's an issue we'll keep working on. Council, any other questions regarding this agenda item? The correctional transitional housing facilities, I assume, is part of the July 1st council meeting as well?
That is correct, Mayor. So it'll be before you for introduction on July 1st and for action on July 8th.
Okay, thank you. Council, any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. I know I've seen you guys out and about in the community the last few days. Who wants to go first?
I'll jump in.
Yes, Mr. Freeman.
So I attended with Councilmember Thompson and yourself our police graduation last week, and it was really awesome. And got some new graduates and police officers out and with their FTOs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
It's not really in Mesa, or related to Mesa, but I was invited to a grand opening for the Janus, I forget the last name. It's a center, Ashante and Sherry, a couple, amazing couple, started a boutique to, to get funding to build a domestic violence shelter. And so they invited me out to their grand opening, and it was, it's an amazing, and it is in Awatuki. So you do have to go to Awatuki if you want to, if you want to buy from their boutique. But it goes to a good cause, because they're, they're fighting domestic violence, and they want to bring a domestic violence shelter to Mesa. So that's why I was supporting them.
Okay, thank you. Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes, while the graduation was going on, I actually went on a PD ride-along with Sergeant Leo Devilla. And that PD ride-along turned into a fire ride-along, because as we were riding along the street to look at some crime issues, we saw a fire. And we called it in and stuck it out for three hours while the sergeant closed the street with PD. We had four engines, I think we had up to six engines at one time, because they had to trade out. We had three engines working on a fire at 899 East Southern. And it was amazing. The fire was very fast-moving. It hadn't started on one corner and engulfed all the way to the other side, including a trailer and a car, and trees, power lines, everything in between, in just like less than 15 minutes. And fire arrived, amazingly, put out, controlled the fire in no time at all. There was ammunition in the building and gunpowder and things like that. So there was a lot of danger involved. They set up a command unit to coordinate all the fire engines and ladders, you can correct me on my terminology, and PD. And I was able to go in after they got that set up and coordinated, and watch it and listen to the radio. I was absolutely amazed by how much coordination. The firefighters have a radio on them, they're inside the, the building, explaining what they're seeing, how things are going, how they're doing with their oxygen. It's 115 degrees late afternoon on Friday. And so their, you know, endurance and commitment to putting out this fire, I left around 6:30, had been going on for three hours then, and they were cutting a hole in the top of the roof, because there was still some smoldering going on, and they couldn't figure out where it was. But they said they would probably be on there for a few more hours, just to make sure that the area was secure and free of any fire. An amazing operation. I saw our equipment and our, the staff from PD and fire working together in a way that was very impressive. I'm so proud and want to say thank you to everyone out there. I'm very impressed and proud to be from Mesa and to see so much commitment go on to making sure that our properties and people are safe. I was blown away by the experience. I'm very thankful to be able to have that experience, to see them in operation. So that was my big drama for the weekend. And as soon as I was able to depart from there, I ran over to Zen Nights, it's a festival in downtown Mesa, with the mayor and many other of our community people. Kiana Sears was there, Lisa Sears, Ron Williams, and many others. And the mayor presented a proclamation for the Juneteenth holiday in Mesa. It was, although it was quite hot, the mayor reminded us, it's always cool in Mesa. So it was, it was a fun event and a way to, a great way to finish off the day. And this morning, I went to the Mesa Police Youth Leadership Academy and kicked it off. And that's a high school student leadership academy. And I think their first endeavor this morning was something like jumping from a building with SWAT or something. Regardless, I didn't stay for that part. But they also incorporate using mentors and community leaders and teaching a lot of leadership skills and having fun at the same time. So I was thankful to say good morning to them and wish them well. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, it's good to have someone on our council with some real-life fire experience.
I was so jealous.
As these issues come up, I think you'll be able to bring a wealth of-
You should have laid a line.
Yeah, should have laid a line. Thank you. And again, the Youth Public Safety Academy, we need to talk about that more. This is a great experience for teens in our community that might be interested in a career in public service. And it's really a great experience for them in the summer to get some firsthand introduction to that, much like the Vice Mayor did over the weekend. So, thank you. Council, any other comments under this agenda item? Thank you. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule look like?
Thank you, Mayor. We will see you on Thursday, June 24th. We do have a few of our Eastmark Facility Districts and Cadence Community District Board meetings first, and then we will have a presentation on Regional Homeless Plan from, represented from Mayor Copa Association of Governments. So we'll be able to hear, I know the mayor's heard it and some others, but this is the plan that's being presented throughout the whole region. So we thought it'd be good for the council to receive that presentation also.
That's great. Looking forward to it. All right, if there's nothing else, Council, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.